All right, welcome to our November 18th City Council meeting. This is obviously a special meeting in regards to our conference center and the next stages to that. Before we officially start tonight's meeting, Ms. Carrie Carroll will lead us in the prayer, and then please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, give us the strength to greet this day in peace. Help us in all things to rely on your holy will. Reveal your will to us every hour of the day. Bless our dealings with all people. Treat us to treat all people who come to us throughout the day with peace of soul and with firm conviction that your will governs all. In all our deeds and words, guide our thoughts and feelings. In unexpected events, let us not forget that all are sent by you. Teach us to act firmly and wisely without embittering others. Give us the physical strength to bear the labors of this day. Direct our will and teach us to pray. Amen.
Amen.
I would like to be a little bit sincere to God, and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call, please.
Branch.
Here.
Bray.
Here.
Carroll, here. Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schulte.
Here.
Scrivner.
Here.
We have a quorum. Next, we'll move on to number three. Drew Hilpert is our acting city administrator and also our city attorney. Drew, would you please walk us down our next step?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Wanted to kind of go through as much for the public as the council about what's going down under this item. The vote tonight, obviously, is the completion of Phase Two of the RFP for the Conference Center. It's our intention to vote on the selection of a developer to move forward. The next stage is essentially the hard work of coming to an agreement on a contract. It will fill in all those details, deal with all those issues, such as, you know, what if the developer decides to sell the property? What happens if the conference center goes bankrupt? You know, how do we make these, what incentives are necessary, and that type of stuff? All those things will be dealt with in that contract stage. Certainly, I think the original RFP did contemplate a contract at the end of Phase Two, but we've, you know, differentiated from that, as Charles Johnson had suggested, really, that's kind of a next step type of thing. We've got the, the agenda breaks the next, the rest of this process down into the three steps. Of course, my explanation tonight, but then the public comment for the selection of the developer, we do have a list, I think there's about 10 people on it. You'll be limited to three minutes each. We're going to try to keep you to that tight schedule because we've got a lot of business to conduct tonight, and there's been, you know, we've had a lot of public comment, which has all been very good, and I know the council's appreciated it. The next step then will be a discussion by the council. The council will discuss and debate what they're going to do. They may make motions, and they also may ask questions of either staff, or I think we indicated to the developers that they may have questions for the developers as well. And if they're here and willing to answer, they'll be allowed to do that. There's certainly two, well, the next step, and then the final step in this is the vote. We do have the vote on the Earhart proposal first, and then the vote on the Farmer proposal second. That was fairly randomly picked because that's the way they came in to us. There's been, of course, discussion over the weeks of, there's two other possible motions that may be made, and those motions will be made under the discussion by council. You could vote to move both forward together, you could vote to move neither forward, and obviously, doing that would dispose of the need to make those motions individually. I'm going to go ahead and opine here for a second. I think there's some inherent difficulties in moving both forward, I just want to tell the council that straight up. The difficulty is that if you're negotiating with both developers for the same contract, obviously, at some point, you have to make that, that choice, and there's going to be some question, in my mind, from the developer's standpoint, how willing they're going to be to spend their money and move forward on that contract if they're still in the, in the competition stage. I think they're both looking for us to make that one step forward and pick one of them to move forward, if that's what we're going to do. Both proposals have their strengths and weaknesses, and the council will have to decide on those tonight, obviously, we're probably. The next thing that happens if we move forward with one or both is that we do go to that negotiation, the contract stage, and the timing for that, I'm not, you know, can't guarantee, certainly, some of the questions we'll answer early, it will be a staff discussing and negotiating with the conference center developers and their attorneys and their folks as well. I wouldn't want to put a timeframe exactly on when the final contract would be done, because as I've said to some people, I don't want to, I want to keep the city in the highest leverage position, so if we promise the public a contract by February 1st, you know, the developers may be less likely to bend on some points if they know, if they know there's public pressure on the city to make a decision quickly. So I want to, when that final development agreement will come, when it's, when it's ready to be, to be brought forward, and again, the council may agree with it then or it may not agree with it. So there's definitely some issues to be worked out, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that the council may have when it's time. It's been a long process, appreciate you all hanging with me, and hopefully, we've done that with you, and for the public, you all should know that the council's done a ton of work in front of the, in front of you and behind the scenes, and there's nobody in the city who's got more information on this than they do, so, you know, you've elected them to represent you, and I believe that they will do what they believe is best tonight.
Drew, thank you. Any comments or questions for Drew before we move to the next stage?
I'd just like to clarify one thing. If a developer selected tonight, a single developer, and for whatever reason, during the negotiation process, we can't come to an agreement, and so, we both agree not to agree, can the city then approach the second developer and see if they would be interested in entering into negotiations, or would we have to start the process over entirely?
Sure, no, and that kind of goes to another question, what if the council chooses to do neither? You're going to be available, you can either restart the RFP, same as if that developer backs out, or you could go directly to another developer and just enter into a development agreement directly without a, without a RFP process. The RFP was kind of designed to say, we're not, we know what we have, we know what assets we have, but we're not sure what we can get for that, so we asked the developers to give us that response. But we didn't have to go that way, you know, we could have simply approached one, the other, or another developer, and said, we'd like to work with you and see if we can just make a deal with you, and ultimately, I think that's what the drearys were looking for when they put in their first bid. They wanted it to say, you know, we're the strongest developer, now let's talk just one-on-one and see if we can work that thing out. And then, of course, the third option is that you decide to do something else with the money and go a different way from the conference center.
So there's no city ordinance, or there's no state law that would require us to issue an RFP, that's just the way we chose to do it?
That is correct. We chose to do it that way, we're not required to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Drew, about the procedures? Oh, go ahead, Carlos, sorry.
Drew, remind me one more time, please, about, of your thought process of not forwarding both developers through.
Sure, I, you know, I will support whatever the council decides, and I understand, let me start with the reasons you might want to do it. If there's questions that you still have that aren't answered yet in these best and final proposals, and you feel like both proposals are valid and could work in the end, and you want to see what a final contract looks like before you make that final decision, that would be a reason to move both forward. But I'm telling you, from the other side of that is, we're doubling our costs and doubling our expenses in terms of the negotiation. I feel like, from what we've seen already, and what we've kind of talked about with the developers, that they're going to have some concern that if we don't just pick one, they're not going to give us much more than we've already received from them. You know, will they spend much more money than they have already without any more assurances? And the other part of that is, you know, we've talked about reimbursable expenses, the RFP talked about, you know, the successful developer will have some, could have some of their, could have a stipend for these development costs. And I think certainly, both developers, if you move them into the next stage, are going to be looking for those, the stipend for these additional costs that we'll be looking for. So my concern is, you're increasing our costs, and I, I, you can ask the developers if they're here, how they feel about it, but that they would not be all that excited about continuing this dual process where we haven't put our best foot forward.
Do you know approximate dollar amount?
I mean, what, I mean- Well, I don't, you know-
I mean, if you can just give us some ranges so that myself and the council can be thinking about this, because if it's a-
Sure.
If it's, if it's a double-up procedure as far as the amount of money, that's a lot, that could be a lot of money, right?
It certainly could. I wouldn't think it'd be a double-up procedure, and I, let me back up and say, I think one of the things we've, I failed to mention in my opening remarks here, is that probably the first issue the council has to decide after we select a developer is how we want it, who we want to get on our side going forward. So there's certainly some talk about a Charles Johnson type who's seen this, who's been through this stage before, and can they give us some guidance, make sure our bases are covered? Maybe some outside counsel as well to assist with the negotiation. And Charles, I think, had quoted to the mayor a cost of probably around $40,000 for the next stage, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think you're doubling those costs, but-
He just, he just said that in passing as he was leaving town the other night, so to speak.
Not, not a bid, we're not holding to it, but, you're probably going to get some efficiency out of that, you're not going to double those costs, but I think you're, he's contemplating a single developer. If you hire an attorney to assist me, I mean, Jeremy and I can do it to a degree, if you get a city administrator in here, it'll be a lot easier, you know, to leave to those duties too, but-
You keep bringing that up.
Yeah. But anyway, you know, there could be some additional costs there, there's probably looking at both of their proposals, going to be some economic incentives, so we're going to need some, some money there, some that'll be paid for by the developer, but, you know, in terms of economic people, you're looking at double, just as an example, the TIF analysis for the BUT4 test was $10,000. If Johnson's 40 and he charges us 60 to do both, I mean, it's significant money, so, you know, I, I respect the council if they decide to move forward on both, but just recognize it does add to the costs.
And, and you did not give us necessarily a timeframe.
I didn't, you know, I think-
You wouldn't know that until you find out what, what you're looking at.
Yeah, I think each, the, I mean, let's just shoot straight here and say that Farmer's proposal will probably be a little bit easier to get something final sooner, the, because there's more unknowns probably about the downtown, so it takes a little bit longer to get you some final proposal there probably, but both of them are going to require some pretty serious negotiation, you know, make it work, so. I can get you some updates probably within a couple of months to answer some of these questions that are there, but, you know, final contract is, I don't want to say, because it puts us in a bad leverage position.
Okay. Any other questions for Drew? All right, we'll move into the next phase, which is a public comment on the selection of developer. First, I have on the list here of 10 Ms. Sue Cox. Sue, thank you for, for coming, you wrote a nice letter the other day. I think someone encouraged you to be here tonight, we appreciate you being here, please limit your remarks to three minutes, please.
Good evening. My name is Sue Cox, and I live at 1003 Country Ridge Drive here in Jefferson City. I asked the mayor for time to speak tonight in favor of a conference center. I think it will help add a lot of vibrancy to our community, but I do think it's time that we quit talking about this, that we select the best developer and we act. I think the recent proposal for the Capitol Mall area has presented some new information that we'd never thought about before, and we should give it our support. In my professional career, I traveled to many conferences and events held throughout Missouri and other states, often in towns similar to Jefferson City. Seldom were these conference centers in downtown areas. They were attached to malls, offering shopping times and breaks and meals. We took shuttles to downtown areas for additional shopping, meals, and sightseeing. Information at centers pointed us in these directions around town. I think the same thing will happen in Jefferson City. I don't think it's healthy to promote one side of our community over another, or to pit one side of town against another. There's the big picture, we're in this together, and in the end, Jeff City wins. I also don't believe we should hire consultants to do studies, offer an objective opinion, use tax dollars to pay for it, and then ignore the business guidance and the facts. The mall proposal happens to reflect local developers with an interest in investing in their hometown. I think this is a good thing. They've done their homework, they know the investment will pass the test. So be it. I'm glad we have those who want to see good things happen and are in a position to make it happen. The economic impact of an enhanced mall area is exciting and promising. It offers new restaurants, new stores, it will bring people to our town that will stay in all of our hotels and shop at all of our businesses. I'm proud of our downtown area. The revitalization helped us become the most beautiful small town, but there's still so much to do in Jefferson City. A conference center right now will be the icing on the cake. We should take the proposal that gives us the best return on our investment and considers the finances of the city at this time. That's the mall proposal. Thanks to those who've worked on this project, who share information with the public, and who help to make the community the best, the best that it is. We appreciate your efforts, but we do believe it's time to move forward, so let's get going. Thank you.
Sue, thank you very much for coming tonight, appreciate it. Next, I have Mr. Glenn Castalas. Glenn, welcome back, sir.
First of all, I promise all of you, I will not come back and talk to you about conference centers for the rest of the year. And as popular as the last few of these have been, you guys should have been charged admission, that would have helped you guys out on the finance side. Okay, now for what I'm here for this evening. First, I have here copies of letters which were hand-delivered to the city clerk for distribution to all of you, and personally, to Councilwoman Carroll, and they are from several hotel owners stating that they do not believe Jefferson City's hotel market can support an additional hotel. Second, in Friday's News Tribune, Bob Watson writes, "Third Ward Councilman Bob Scrivner said neither the Farmers nor Earharts have provided numbers that would give the council a clear understanding of how they would fund the center each has proposed. If you are not 100% sure of how either developer would fund their center, then don't select either one. Do not provide the developers an open door and red carpet to the taxpayers' wallets." Lastly, "I realize you have spent a great amount of time during the process which has led to this evening's vote. I know as a collective body, you want to do what is right. Therefore, I would like to remind you of City Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, City Council, which reads as follows, Section 2-7-1. Council members not to vote on certain issues. No member of the City Council shall be permitted to vote for or against any ordinance appropriating money or for the allowance of any account or claim, or for the award or approval of any contract in which such member is directly or indirectly interested. In any ordinance, resolution, or motion having passed by the vote of such interested member shall be deemed illegal and of no effect. I believe to avoid any implication or insinuation of impropriety or conflict of interest that both Councilwoman Carroll and the mayor recuse themselves from voting. These two individuals could benefit financially from the outcome of this vote due to family property ownership and their business affiliations. Thank you."
I'll, I'll take the first one, Carrie. The only land I own that I remember is on Yorktown Drive, and I don't think, I don't think either proposal is heading that direction, so. What's that? Business, we sell electrical supplies, we sell to, we don't sell to necessarily just anyone, we sell to everybody, so. I think, Drew, if you want to, you can, you can chime in here, or, I mean, that's a, that's a serious allegation, and just send you to address it.
We've, we've talked about that before, I don't think there's a, there's other council people with kind of tangential concerns as well, but because of the way our code talks about direct conflicts and the way it's defined, it talks about you personally benefiting, there's, there's a layer of potential conflict of interest that the question is, does the appearance of impropriety, is that so much you should back out? And that's for each individual council people to decide, but there's, I don't believe there's a direct conflict of interest that would require any of you to opt out unless there's something I don't know about.
Carrie, good to go? Okay. Next, Mr. Tim Stallman.
Tim Stallman, 2204 Melody Drive. We, the taxpayers, deserved an election on this white elephant convention center. What happened to the principles of democracy in our city? We deserve a real election. The ballot we were handed three years ago never mentioned a parking garage, a super TIF, whatever that is, or a CID sales tax. It did not mention the possibility of a convention center located four miles away from our beautiful Capitol Building, or building it in a floodplain. Both these projects are different projects than what the taxpayers were shown. You can be sure that whoever wins this popularity contest will be back for another bite at the apple. The developer will come back when the taxpayers aren't looking, and ask for a million bucks in yearly subsidies paid for from general revenue. Just you wait and see. Ask yourself this question, who will actually benefit from this boondoggle? Is it the taxpayers or the elite business class that runs this city? It should not be the responsibility of the taxpayer to fund private buildings. I submit to you that those receiving subsidies are the new welfare class. Subsidies are welfare for the rich, pure and simple. I ask you to stop this process and let private money fund this project. You can do that tonight by voting no on both projects. Thank you.
Next, I have Camille McLean.
Thank you for having me and allowing me to speak. I feel like I'm representing a little bit of a different side than some of the other folks that are here. I'm a resident at 3416 Hobbs Lane, which is right off of Country Club and very close to the Capitol Mall. I feel like I'm representing most of the people in our area and saying that we really are concerned about having a six-story hotel room, hotel, excuse me, built so close to our residences. For, for one thing, it will affect our view from our homes. I hate the idea of thinking of looking out the kitchen window and seeing a top of a six-story building and having them able to look right back into our backyards, as you might say. The other issue is the traffic that we were concerned about. The traffic on Country Club, and then for the two different entrances to the proposed area are the same entrances that we have to use to get to our homes, so we were, we were concerned about whether there's any kind of analysis done on how it will impact the traffic in our area. So I believe that's all I have to say, and I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it very much. Next, I have Mr. Vic Purie. Vic, welcome back.
My name is Vic Purie. I am the Executive Vice President and General Counsel for the Purie Group of Enterprises. We own 540 rooms in Jefferson City out of the 1,000 that are here, so you can say I have a vested interest in the conference center and its development. When I initially came up to you guys here a little while back, I had this proposal in my hand, within it I had a chart, and that chart has been duplicated again here to show you the side-by-side comparison of the proposals that have been presented to you. At that point, as in today's point, I wanted to point out to the fact that, you know, you can't fit a square peg in a round hole. Although I believe the developers, the Farmers and the Earharts have, actually, more so the Farmers, have gone back and tried to shave off the corners to try to make this thing fit, it still is not the right project for what we want to accomplish as a city as a whole. The RFP specifically stated that it wanted to have more than 200-plus rooms of a hotel attached to this conference center. It also said that the conference center development was supposed to be at least 25,000 square feet of exhibition space, minimum, in addition to what's already here. To re-quote Diane Gillespie, the CVB, an individual that is appointed by you to bring in business into this city, and Dave Wallace, who's been in this community for over 20 years as a sales representative, bringing business into this community, if it's not the right size, ladies and gentlemen, you're not going to accomplish anything. The only thing that you will accomplish is you will rob Peter to pay Paul. And that is not what we want to do with this economic development. This economic development should be something that is a injection into the economy of funds as well as employment. The projects here, as you were informed by Mr. Castalas, the letter has been sent out, it was handed by owners of hotels within Jefferson City. Thirteen of 14 hotels oppose the conference center being built with the addition of 150 rooms, okay? That means the, it's not something that is endorsed by the people that have the most benefit from it. There's a reason why these individuals do not want that here. That is something that you should consider. The hotel economy is not as strong as everyone would like it to be. For this project to succeed, we have to make sure that we strengthen the local hotel industry and go hunting, no, strengthen the local hotel industry and make sure that we can increase revenues that will support it. We cannot just say if we build it, it will come. What are the differences between the proposals that have been made, although they made an valiant effort? They've only increased the size of the conference space to 30,000 square feet. They've only had it 150 rooms. Don't fit the RFP. If there's infrastructure improvements like Ms. Camille has pointed out that haven't been considered for the western side, and we all know the amount of infrastructure improvements in the parking garage over in the downtown area. The parking garage in downtown Columbia for the hotel that's being developed, that the city signed on for, that was all gung ho, estimated cost nine million. Bid cost 11 million. Completion cost 16 million. All right, ladies and gentlemen, once, twice, three times? Look, you don't need to get involved in that aspect of it. That aspect is going to be dangerous for everybody involved. I implore you to reconsider this, be leaders for the community, and say no to both proposals, because you don't have to settle for what's here. Okay? If it's not the right size, throw it back in the lake.
Vic, thank you for coming tonight. Do you have a question? Drew, I have one question as, as to what he just said, and I'm not sure when I should, if I should ask you, or ask now, or not ask at all.
Why don't you wait till we get to the time to ask any questions?
Okay. I'm going to let, we're going to do that here in just seconds, that, correct Drew, that, once we're done. Okay, next, I have Mr. Dostaki. There you are. Welcome back.
First, I have to say thank you for giving me opportunity. I am a resident of this city over 45 years. I attended Lincoln University when tuition was $250 a semester, so that goes a long time ago. I studied this subject through the News Tribune information and talked to the local about it, and I do not know the Farmers Investor in Capitol Mall, although I lived in Monticello Acre for 22 years, which is about mile and a half from there. I have one recommendation for this mayor and the city council members. Look at this subject on economics focus, and because it is an economic issue, it's not political or social, I favor Capitol Mall site as a center for conference center. The reasons are following. Capitol Mall, 64% has occupancy, per News Tribune, October 27, 2013 data. Capitol Mall is sold because it was a stressed property. Farmers investors or farmer holding company took opportunity and bought it practically for less than 50 cents on a dollar. You cannot build it for $50 million. We must put this conference center at the site because it has only a lot of concrete vacant area, grass area, there is room to expand. The property, the site is about three and a half mile to downtown Jeff City. A small bus shuttle can take care of that. The investors, I asked some friend of mine in financial institution in mid-Missouri about 400. about farmers, who they are, what they do during their life, investment in mid-Missouri, whether Jeff City or Columbia, they gradually increased and enhanced their businesses. They develop it. They got rich, per some individual. They are successful. They are knowledgeable. They have a know-how, how to function the center in order to enhance Capitol Mall. If we allow Capitol Mall drop less than 64%, it will be negatively reflect on this community and this investment for this city. As I said, this Jeff City, in a long time ago, after 5:00 PM, the, when I used to work at Governor's Hotel at that time, the outsider come and said where we could go eat. I said 5:00 PM, they turned the lights off. Look what happened to us. So, city council must look at it from the future, 10 years from now. How much will cost us to build it? Because today's dollar is, has more ability to buy than 10 years from now. Why we, I, I agree, I, I wanted Capitol Mall. As I said, they got their own security outside and inside. Capitol Mall, it's very close to the Highway 50. It got a space. Anybody from town comes over there and see through Highway 50, look at the other side, look at the access to the two banks, two hotels.
Sir, we've hit that three-minute mark. If you could wrap it up, we've got some other people.
And let me tell you one thing, giving the local individual who invests in this town will enhance the others to show up and maybe bring more businesses in this town. I will say, and, and the flood situation in this town, remember how much flood we had? Capitol Mall does not have such a situation. All I say, good luck, and please do not allow this project become another failed attempt among many. And as you know, the leadership brought good project, but they failed for whatever reason. So, good luck, and let us go few, further in future.
Thank you very much for taking the time to be here tonight. Um, next, we have Mr. Jeff Holt. Is that correct? Is it Holt or with a W? Wolt? I know a little bit about German. Strumpf is a German for little stockings, by the way.
Yeah, they pronounce it Volt.
German lesson for the day.
Yeah, Herman. Uh, Jeff Holt here. Thank you. Uh, been a long life, um, native of Jefferson City, and I worked for Division of Tourism for over 15 years. So I planned meetings and went all over the country. And I'm certainly a big proponent of a convention center, uh, spent a lot of time in them. After sitting through several meetings, uh, that I've just kind of gotten involved in, I've just, um, had a couple things that I think we need to point out. Uh, and Mr. Scrivener, um, you know, was concerned with the numbers and how they've, some have been left off. So, I think they need to be provided by all parties. I think that's critical. Neither proposal has fulfilled the RFP's criteria as written, 200-plus rooms, 40,000 square feet of meeting space. I really feel to do this right, we have to give the people something that is not here. Um, our CVB director, Diane Gillespie, in the News Tribune article, and I believe it was alluded to earlier, uh, if it's not big enough, we will just display business to another hotel. Very true. Uh, the Capitol Plaza has 200 rooms and over 22,000 square feet of meeting space. The Truman Hotel and Conference Center has, uh, over 233 rooms and over 26,000 square feet of flexible meeting space. So I come back to what is proposed. 150 rooms with 30,000 square feet of, uh, meeting space. The RFP just wanted an exhibition space of 25,000 square feet. Neither current proposal has this exhibition space. So to do it right, we need the development to have 25,000 square feet of exhibition space and to the already present, 22,000 or 26,000 that's here in two current hotels. I feel that in addition, for a conference center to be successful, you need at least 200 rooms located in such as Capitol Plaza or the Truman. Doing anything less would be displacing business from one hotel to another. Again, if it's, if it's not the right fit, it just won't work, folks. I think we all deserve to have additional facts before we're voting to hand over $9 million to a company. So I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Jeff, for being here tonight. Uh, next, we have Ms. Stephanie Bell. Stephanie, welcome back.
Thank you for allowing me to be here to speak with you once again, and I appreciate all the conversations I've been able to have with you over the last several months and all of your hard work on this issue. Um, first, I just wanted to address one issue. I believe you received a petition today with a number of signatures in support of the mall, and it was previously reported that people were standing at the, uh, the movie theater asking, "Do you want to save the mall?" And I think, you know, sign me up. I would sign that petition, save the mall. Um, but I don't think that's the issue, uh, here before you, and so I'd urge you to consider that when looking at those signatures, that, um, we all want to save the mall, we all want to see the mall succeed, but that's not the issue, um, that we're here today about. Um, in addition, I'd urge you to look at the cost of the facility. Ultimately, both facilities are going to require substantial subsidies. Both facilities propose a 150-room hotel and 30,000 square feet of meeting space. The downtown site does so at two-thirds of the cost. Even when you add in the parking garage and the cost for the site acquisition, the cost is still less on the downtown site location. Because the taxpayers are going to be required to cover the costs on this, I urge you to consider the total cost of the project when looking at, um, the structure. Also, on the parking issue, a lot has been said about the need to build a parking garage in downtown and that that parking fund, or that, that parking garage would be additional money by taxpayers. But make no mistake, parking will be paid by taxpayers at both locations. The Capitol Mall TIF would be $50.1 million total taxpayer subsidy over the lifetime of the TIF, and one of the expected uses for the TIF is for resurfacing of parking lots. There's only three uses: internal facade improvements, external facade improvements, and resurface, resurfacing of the parking lot. So make no mistake, regardless of which site location, taxpayers will be bearing the burden of the parking. Finally, a lot's been said about local developers, and no one will deny that the farmers are local developers, but the question that should be considered is where the impact will fall long-term on the community. And when you put that center in one spot or the other, where the impact will fall long-term? The downtown site location would be a choice to support our small, local businesses. Our small business owners are the backbone of our community. Please vote for downtown. And once again, if you're here in support of the downtown site, please stand. Raise your hand. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Stephanie, thank you, and, uh, Stephanie, I in particularly want to thank you for all of your hard work, uh, on this project. I know it's something that, uh, brings a lot of emotion and is in spirit, and on behalf of the council, thank you for, for all you've done in the communication with our community. Uh, next, I have Donald Trabue. Did I get it that time?
I knew you'd make it.
All right, finally.
You keep trying, you've got to get it right. Uh, I'm Don Trabue, 4710 Denise Drive in Jeff City. I've had several conversations with meeting planners. Finding from them, we actually need 40,000 to 60,000 square foot. We can't afford that. We have to build what we can afford. It's been decided that 34, 30,000 to 40,000 square foot is all we can afford. But such 30,000 to 40,000 square foot has to be designed so that we, at a later date, when the necessity arises, we can expand it to 50, 60,000 square feet as needed, with this being contiguous expansion. It's been decided that 150-room hotel is needed. It must be built as a part of this proposal. Is it really necessary? Maybe. We got plenty of hotel space going to waste in this town. Maybe it's necessary. Downtown location proposes 40,000-square-foot conference center with 30,000 square foot utilized in one contiguous area. Lot placement is such that additional contiguous conference center could be added at a later date, with, if designed properly, only tearing out one wall, not any major construction, minor construction, and move on. The downtown additionally, there's 13,000-plus square foot of meeting space in adjacent Capitol Plaza Hotel. This is in addition to the 30,000 that's going to be supplied next door. With, the, uh, downtown section is within walking distance of several potential overflow hotels. It's within the walking distance of most state offices. It's within walking distance of several city historic sites. Development of a working agreement with Capitol Plaza Hotel could negate, negate the necessity of the 150-room hotel at this time. Maybe it could be put off to a later date. I'd utilize the 250 rooms that are currently in Capitol Plaza and help alleviate the lack of attendance at hotels in this town. Yes, funding has some problems. They should be workable with a lot of effort. The downtown location is by far the best overall proposal and should be treated as such. It should most definitely be voted to be moved forward to a development agreement stage. Now, let's talk about the mall location.
Your time's actually up. If you could wrap it up pretty quick.
Okay. Went by fast. Uh, I might mention, you have a further report before you. Basically, in wrapping it up, as Drew said, the mall is not within walking distance of anything above mentioned. The mall proposal is, at best, a second-best proposal and should be treated as such. Thank you.
Mr. Trabue, thank you again for being here. Our last and final speaker underneath the public comment on selection of developers is Mr. Kirk Farmer.
Can Rob speak also?
Uh, you have three minutes.
This is going to be tricky.
Can you, can you do that with your old NFL training?
Sure.
I guess, is that legal there, Drew? Is that legal? Two guys, three minutes?
Yeah.
Just checking.
Actually, in all seriousness, can I take three minutes? And then can Kirk have three minutes? Is that, or do we need to speak? We can do, we can do it in three minutes?
Well, the, the rule on these things is the council can, can grant more time if they choose to.
Okay, cool.
I mean, so I don't know if you want to ask them now and they make the motion or not, so you know ahead of time.
We'll just, uh, we'll do our best.
We'll make it quick?
Thank you all for the opportunity, uh, mayor, city council staff, and all the citizens that have been involved in this process. This is an historic night, and it's been a historic process. Just want to remind everyone that this project, what it represents, it represents 100,000 new visitors to Jefferson City, 100 new jobs, 3 to 4 million, and new payroll and benefits. We have a plan that, uh, can, can begin tomorrow, but we're ready to go. There's no participation needed from the state or from any other hotels in town. Our plan has been endorsed by, uh, the city's hired consultant, the News Tribune, the Cole County Commissioner, and also the mayor. You know, our highlights include that we're not located in a floodplain. We've got 3,000 parking spaces that are existing. We've got an opportunity to add an additional 1,000 parking spaces. Uh, 145,000 square feet of expansion space, four and a half acres of ground, and an additional hotel can be added, and we've also proposed a complimentary shuttle service to reach all parts of our city. You know, it's important that the dollars make it to all parts of our city. We're, we're willing to do whatever we can to help facilitate that process. We've, we've asked many to be here with us tonight, and we're proud to have them here. Uh, we, we also have a, a petition we'd like to, to give you all that was signed by 1,200 people, uh, in excess of 1,200 people supporting our site. Uh, Kirk and I were not there, uh, for every signature. To, to our best interests, it was, it was read just like it says at the top. So there's a lot of misinformation out there, really, in all parts of our plan, something that we've had to really work to overcome. Uh, but we, we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Uh, we know that we all care about Jefferson City, both on the council and all the developers, and we look forward to working with the council going forward regardless of what the outcome is to push Jefferson City forward.
Why don't you pass them out, and I'll just go ahead and say a quick word. It's, it's been an honor to be a part of this discussion with you all and the public because this is such an important issue to so many in the community. Uh, we've dedicated a substantial amount of time to this project, uh, to understand the feasibility and to make it a reality. Uh, we've said from the beginning, we are citizens of this community, and more than anything, more than anything, we want it to happen. So we think our plan is strong enough to be the only developer approved tonight, but standing here in front of you, honestly, I don't know where most of you stand. So, if you are unsure, if you have unanswered questions about either proposal, it would be better to put us both forward than to do just the downtown site or to pick nothing at all. That would be horrible. So we understand there's a lot of emotion and desire, by some, for the downtown site to be selected. We feel there are just too many hurdles to overcome. You have to work with the state to acquire the ground with no allocated source of funds. You have to build a parking garage that must be funded that arguably isn't even in the right spot, and you still have a funding gap that must be filled with incentives that are not likely to be obtained by the developer. So this, this plan is a hail mary. So as elected leaders of our community, I pray that you will make a decision tonight to move us forward. Please, please, don't go against what experts and thousands in the community have said, that this is the best plan that's been in front of you in decades. So we ask for your vote. We are so excited to move forward with you. We are excited to move forward with the community. We ask that you vote to move our plan forward tonight. God bless you, God bless this city, and thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Drew, do you have anything to add at this point in time before we have a discussion by the council?
I don't. Again, uh, you can, uh, debate, ask questions of staff, ask questions of the developers.
Are we, is it, is it just general, is it gen, I mean, since, you know, since normally we have one motion on the floor, so to speak, is this just general, uh, conversation?
Well, I think you're debating what to do next, so it, it does relate to those two, uh, votes we're gonna have, or their motions that the council may wish to make, or if you'd like to share with the public your thoughts, or it's a bit more open than usual, but still conference center-directed.
Okay.